I'd like to call the South Windsor Town Council meeting for Monday, June 7th to order. It is 7:02 PM. Just going to remind everyone to please wear your masks during the entire time of the meeting, and we're going to start tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to ask Ms. Reed, a clerk of the council, for the roll call.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Evans?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pendleton? She is here. Mayor Paterna?
Present.
Counselor Manelli?
Here.
Counselor Snyder?
Here.
Counselor Kibowski?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Just a few remarks before we begin tonight. One is that our contractor for the waste trash hauler in South Windsor, All American Waste, has received an award from the Hartford Business Journal as one of the top business companies to work with in Connecticut. So congratulations to All American Waste. Second one is part of the bad news that we've all gone through over the last few weeks, but I want to let you know that the Jessica Edwards family sent me a note that said this coming Friday, June 11th, is the wake for Jessica Edwards at The Lodge at 1:30 Deerfield Road in Windsor, Connecticut, and then the funeral on Saturday, June 12th at 9:30 a.m. Rehoboth Church of God, 1170 Blue Hills Avenue, Bloomfield, Connecticut. Family has asked that you please wear cheerful colors, as Jessica had a very cheerful spirit, and asking all guests for the wake and the funeral to wear masks. Our prayers are with the Edwards family. Thank you. Now we'll move on to adoption of the agenda. Counselor Kibowski?
Second.
All right. There's a motion to adopt the agenda, and it's been seconded. Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move items 13A and B up right after to the adoption of the agenda. I would also like to move 12A right after that. So between five and six will be 13A and B, and then 12A. I would also like to move Executive Session Items B and C to after the public hearing.
Second.
All right. That amendment's been made and seconded. All in favor of adopting the agenda as amended? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, and since we're on, you folks are on split screen, but Deputy Mayor Pendleton and Counselor Manelli, please raise your hand when you're ready to speak, and I will keep an eye on the screen as we go through the meeting, okay? Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, can you talk a little louder?
Yes. How's that? So I'm asking you to just wave your hand when you want to speak, and I will keep an eye on the screen. Thank you. All right. We have adopted the agenda and made some changes, so we're going to go to item 13A and 13B. And that is Counselor Evans.
13A, resolution accepting the resignation of Stephen King Jr. from the Inland Wetlands Agency Conservation Commission. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby accepts with regret the resignation of Stephen King Jr. from the Inland Wetlands Agency Conservation Commission effective June 6, 2021, and be it further resolved that the South Windsor Town Council extends its thanks to Stephen King Jr. for the time he has dedicated to serving his community by his membership on the Inland Wetlands Agency Conservation Commission.
Second.
Here's a second. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. King, for your service on the Inland Wetlands Commission. Appreciate it very much. Any questions about this motion? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you. Item 13B. Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Resolution accepting the resignation of Stephen King Jr. from the Water Pollution Control Authority. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby accepts with regret the resignation of Stephen King Jr. from the Water Pollution Control Authority effective June 6, 2021, and be it further resolved that the South Windsor Town Council extends its thanks to Stephen King Jr. for the time he has dedicated to serving his community by his membership on the Water Pollution Control Authority.
There a second? Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. We thank Mr. King for his service on the Water Pollution Control Authority. We'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you. We will now go on to item 12A. Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 12A, resolution appointing Stephen King Jr. to the South Windsor Town Council. Be it resolved that this South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Stephen King Jr. to the South Windsor Town Council for a term ending November 8, 2021, to fill the unexpired term of Mary Justin Hockenberry.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 6, communications and reports from the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To start with, I just was notified by our IT department. As council members speak into their microphones, if you could try to move it up a little closer, that way we can make sure, even though we're wearing masks, the microphone can pick up everybody's voice. First of all, with our COVID-19 update, to date, total numbers of cases in town, 1,741. 1,683 individuals have passed the time of quarantine, which leaves six individuals currently infected within the community, and unfortunately, we still have 52 individuals who have passed away as a result of coronavirus. To date, our health department has vaccinated 7,314 individuals with their first dose, and currently within the community, we're expecting, we are accounting for about 59.85% of the community vaccinated with their first dose. I would like to see, Mr. Rich, if you want to stand up just real quick. So I think, as everybody remembers, Mr. Dugan had retired a couple months back, gave us kind of a short notice, and our search began as we looked, and sometimes you don't have to look too too far to find the right person, and we were very fortunate to look just down the street to Glastonbury to find Mr. Ken Rich. He's our new building official. If you'd like to come up and maybe introduce yourself to the council.
Hi. As you know, Michael just said I'm Ken Rich. I was in business for myself for about the better part of 28 years, and then I was lucky enough to get out of business, and then I wanted to start doing something else. I was too young. So I got into being a building inspector, became a building official with the town of Berlin where I live, and then I got picked up by Glastonbury, which is a great place to work, and the opportunity came up for South Windsor recently, and I explored it, and it was probably one of the best things I ever did. It's just been wonderful. I haven't been here long, but it's, I haven't had one bad moment. It's just been great. So I'm looking forward to all the leaps and bounds and moving on. I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and congratulations.
Thanks very much. Welcome to South Windsor.
Thank you, Ken. Additionally, while introducing Ken, I would also like to recognize Mr. Summers for his great work. He did fill in for us on an interim basis, because we did find ourselves in a bit of a pickle with the spring building season hitting pretty hard this year, and a lot of permit applications coming in, a lot of inspections happening, and he was able to step in on a provisional basis and help keep our department running. So he did a great job in doing that, and very appreciative for that effort. Also wanted to bring the council up to date on a couple things. First of all, last week I had the opportunity to do a walkthrough of Wapping Muse. That's the senior housing, affordable senior housing development that we have in our community. The town entered into a small cities grant of about $800,000 to do renovations to that facility. I had the opportunity to tour those renovations the other day. They look absolutely beautiful. It's nice to see handicap accessibility was included. The facilities are actually safer, because I found out through my walkthrough that they actually didn't have smoke alarms that were connected to the fire department. So if a fire had occurred, a light would have started blinking on a building, and there was no way to actually notify the police or fire department in that process. Now that that connection is made, and they actually can do that. So it was really great. We had some conversations regarding their next application for some additional renovations at their other facility, so looking forward to work with them on that next great project that's coming down the road. A couple items that did not get into the written report for all of you. First and foremost, just so everybody's aware, we are expecting blasting to start at the Costco construction site sometime this week. So for the council, as well as any residents who might be watching, just to be aware that we are expecting them to be blasting. You may be hearing something as a result. Also, with the hot weather that we've had today and probably tomorrow, wanted to remind everybody that the library is open and available for people that need to cool off and take some time out of the heat if they don't have that opportunity. And lastly, any of the council members or visitors who came to the town hall today, as you drove up the driveway, you probably saw a number of painted signs. Those signs were done by the Girl Scouts, and they were actually old political signs that no longer were being used, that they painted over and turned them into inspirational messages. So I think that was pretty neat that they, and they came over here and asked if they could line our driveway with it, and I thought it was a perfect, perfect use. So, and that is all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes. Counselor Manelli?
Yes, how are you? I had a question about the library. When you're in the library, are you still required to wear masks, even if you're going in there just to get cooled off? I had, I had a resident ask me about the mask policy for the library.
Yes, my understanding is in all the town buildings, as well as the library, you are required to wear masks.
Thank you. Is that posted somewhere? Is it posted still outside? I haven't been over there, but is it posted still outside the door or on our website saying that, saying so?
Yeah, we have a lot of signs about wearing masks everywhere, so.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Manelli. Any other questions for the town manager? Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for the update. I have a quick question about the vaccination efforts. Have there been any discussions about the second booster?
The booster? Is that what you said? Yeah, so, you know, it's a little challenging in relation to the idea that some people are getting Johnson &amp; Johnson, some people are getting Pfizer, some people are getting Moderna. It's not really clear. I know there have been discussions with our health department and the state health department about boosters. That being said, we haven't heard of a rollout plan or how they're going to do that at this point yet. So once I am aware, I will make sure that I let everybody else know.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Lopez. Counselor Lidecker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick comment and one question I'm going to ask, since we have our chief here today, Chief Lindstrom. I noticed in here, there's a message, mention about a grant application for CHR for a clinician. Can you tell us a little bit more, what's the grant application, where are they in the process, and what's the clinician going to do during calls? Is it going to be a 24-hour call service? Are they going to have set hours with the police department?
So the grant is being applied for by CHR. It's their grant. They came to us and asked us for letters of support in their pursuit of the grant. So what they're looking to do is to try to work with, within a certain service area. So it would be, for instance, Manchester, Austin, perhaps East Windsor, where they'd try to embed a clinician. It would be based on the historical calls for service. You know, if one community has more than another, then they're going to try to have that clinician assigned to respond in those areas. What they're working on and trying to figure out is some of the logistics, the scheduling, what the response times might be. There's no intention in the, in the grant or in any of the plans with any of the jurisdictions to have the clinician ride along with law enforcement. They'd be responding on their own, covering their own thing. What their response times would be, we're waiting to see and figure out, but I want to reiterate that we have, we are in regular contact with CHR when we go to calls for service, and we understand the public push and call for trying to minimize police involvement in some of these cases. The simple fact of the matter is that oftentimes the clinician won't go in there without us clearing it first. So we're working through some of those logistics, but it is a grant that's been applied for by CHR. We provided a letter of support in their pursuit of the grant.
Thank you very much for that explanation. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention, which was more of a comment, I'm very excited to see, I know in our referendum, we bonded some roofing projects, and it looks like both the community center and the Public Works Garage have come in under budget, which I just wanted to bring to the public's attention, under budget. In the beginning of the bonding process is always a wonderful thing, so thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Lidecker. Any other questions for the town manager? All right. Seeing none, we'll go on to item 7, public input. And I don't know if, Mr. Maniscalco, do we have any emails to read first, or?
No. Mr. Mayor, we're not accepting emails now that we've gone to the hybrid.
Okay.
Fashion, so.
Thank you. So.
Someone wants to get up and talk.
All right. Public input. Anyone care to speak at this time during public input? Going once?
Public input on what?
Well, on anything on the agenda. The public hearing on?
Public hearing.
No, no. That'll be at 8 o'clock. Okay. Thank you. All right. Going once, going twice. All right. We will move on to adoption of the minutes. Deputy Mayor Pendleton?
Adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the following town council meeting. Regular meeting minutes of May 3, 2020.
There a second? All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any changes, additions, corrections to the Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pendleton.
And, Mr. Mayor, I have one more?
Yes.
Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the following town council meeting. Regular meeting minutes of May 17, 2020.
Second.
I mean, 2021.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion made and seconded for the minutes of May 17. Ms. Reed?
I would actually ask if those can be taken off, because there, there was an error in there, and I'd like them revised before they come back before you guys.
Would you like me to rescind my resolution that I had?
Yes, please.
The May 17 one?
All right. For that, Ms. Reed, is that just for the May 17?
May, only for May, yes.
Only for May 17. Okay. So we'll rescind that motion? Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I agree.
I'm asking for some help here. Do we need to vote on rescinding the motion? I don't think we do. If she's rescinded it, right.
No, if she withdrew, that's fine.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
She withdrew my motion, yes.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pendleton. Item 9, communications from liaisons, officers, and boards directly responsible to the council. Any reports? Yes, Counselor Snyder?
Okay. Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the WPCA meeting this week, and they have, they, of course, have finalized their budget, but I just wanted to let everybody know that the sewer rates of 415 will not be going up again this year. They'll be remaining the same. And I just want to let everybody know that there's still, I'm trying to think, the Geysers Plaza project that is still open, and I believe it's on the, on the planning and zoning, as a planning and zoning liaison, it's on their agenda for, to discuss again and perhaps vote if they see fit tomorrow, which is their June 8 meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Snyder. Deputy Mayor Pendleton, did you have a report?
Forgive me, Mr. Mayor. It was a school calling me about early release tomorrow.
Okay.
I have, as a liaison to the Wood Library, I would like to read a document that was sent to me today. Here's an update for our liaison, and it's that No Wash Village will be taking part in the Connecticut Open House Day this Saturday, June 7, 2021, with expanded open hours and free admission. The time is from 12 to 4 at the No Wash Village, which is behind Wood Memorial Library, and they'll be offering a presentation on stone tools through time, indigenous clothing, and personal adornment in the woodland period, three sisters' gardening storytelling, and a featured artifact from the woodland period. Kids can experience everything turtle at our village crafts table. There will be a turtle coloring pages, make your own turtle calendar, and craft your own turtle pendant necklace while supplies last. In addition to these special themed offerings, visitors to the No Wash Village will also be able to experience a multimedia self-guided tour on their personal electronic devices and explore activities for the kids. More details about the No Wash Village are available on the new website, which is www.nowash.org, and there is also easy access link on the slider of the woodmemoriallibrary.org page. And both are on, have Facebook pages. They're on the Wood Memorial Facebook page. And if you can't make it this Saturday, they're also celebrating Connecticut Open House Day virtually by offering free access to their, our introduction to Native American storytelling online learning video. Visitor, virtual visitors can find a link on the homepage of www.nowash.org. And the Connecticut Open House Day is the 17th. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pendleton. Any other reports? We'll go on to item 10, reports from committees, and I think, Counselor Kibowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to give an update on the anniversary committee. The chair was hoping to be here tonight, but there was a family issue, so she couldn't be here. But just a quick update. We are in the middle now of the second scavenger hunt. Unfortunately, I don't have any of the results of the first one, so hopefully she'll have that when she, she comes in a couple weeks. But that can be found on the town website, the details for that. Also, going forward, the committee is planning to be at the concerts in Evergreen Walk, and they'll be providing a bunch of brochures about what's coming up. Everything is starting to ramp up now as we're heading into the summer, and they're also going to have different merchandise, which the chair will have for us when she's here, just to show, but I've seen it, and it is very, very nice. So that is the update for that.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Kibowski. Any other committee reports? All right. Thank you. If not, we'll go on to item 11, our consent agenda, and our first reading, Counselor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first reading, item 11A, motion to approve agenda items 11AA as a first reading on the consent agenda.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any questions about that item? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay. Our second reading, Counselor Manelli?
Yes, sir. For clarification, I read the whole entire thing, correct?
No.
No, just the bold face.
All right. Thank you. All right. Resolution appointing Counselor Jan Snyder, or Janice Snyder, to the pension committee. B, resolution appointing Adam Wood to the Public Building Commission.
She only has to read the motion to approve and the, and the item. She doesn't have to read everyone.
Underneath your name, Lisa.
Also, just read that part. Yeah, that's what I was asking. All right. Motion to approve agenda items 11BA through 11BD as a second reading on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded for this second reading. Any questions about any of the items? If not, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you. We will go on to item 12B, our discussion on the memorial to honor residents who have been impacted by COVID-19. Counselor Evans?
Thank you. Yes. So this is still very much an ongoing project. There have been two companies that have committed to making donations that are forthcoming, as well as others that I know that Mayor Paterna has continued to, to talk to. So I'd like to continue this discussion at our next meeting. That's, that's the most of the update I have. There's not, it's still very much ongoing, and so would like to work more on bringing in more donations from businesses.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Evans. Any questions for Counselor Evans on this project? All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Evans. We'll go on to item 13C. Counselor
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution authorizing town manager Michael Maniscalco to sign and execute four lease agreements, whereas the approved fiscal year 2122 operating budget for the police department included the leasing of four vehicles for the police department, and whereas the police department went through the normal RFP process, and on June 1, 2021, received no proposals to lease vehicles, and whereas the police department still seeks to lease four vehicles within limits set in the approved budget. Now therefore, be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby waives the competitive bidding requirement for the lease of four vehicles to be used as unmarked police vehicles, and be it further resolved that the South Windsor Town Council authorizes town manager Michael Maniscalco to sign and execute four lease agreements and any necessary documents on behalf of the town. to sign and execute four lease agreements and any necessary documents on behalf of the town of South Windsor to secure the lease of four vehicles for the South Windsor Police Department.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Counsel Lidecker, do you want to start, or any questions?
I think the only question I had would be, this is not, I think it mentions that the limits will be within the approved budget. So have you identified cars within that same amount that was set?
So, and maybe the chief will jump in with this, but basically the, the dollar amounts that we identified are, they do meet with the budgeted requirements that we have. And basically it falls within the budgetary allocation that was made by all of you in the last, in the approved budget that you just made. So, we did put it out to bid. Unfortunately, nobody responded. We can also, my, is different reasons why, it's not really very clear why. I know the chief has had some conversations with a vendor who, who does have the vehicles in stock that do meet our, that do fall within our budgetary requirements. So, that's who we're recommending to go forward with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you Counsel Lidecker. Questions, Counsel Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I guess I just have a couple of quick questions. What are your thoughts on why there was no responses on this? Is it based on the industry after COVID, or what do you think?
I think it's a combination of that. You know, some of you may have heard that there's a quote-unquote vehicle shortage and it goes back, boils down to this, this processing of this micro, manufacturing of this microchip that is now not available. But what I think was a, quite frankly, a bigger factor in this was, there were two things. As we kind of, in the pre-planning before doing the RFP, we had reached out to some vendors just to see if they even had cars, people we've done business with in the past. And one was giving us a lot of promises and, and they ended up not bidding. And we reached out to them afterwards and just for our own edification, so we could, you know, better our process in the future and ask why they didn't bid. And they said that they weren't able to get us the cars. And that was contrary to the promise that they had made leading up to and trying to, trying to sell us what they thought they could. The other one, quite again, frankly, was a scheduling error on the vendor's part. And they missed the deadline for the bid. The delivery of, the requested delivery date for the vehicles was July 1st. And I think there was some confusion within their office as to the bid opening date versus the delivery date and they missed it. So when we called them and followed up to see if there's something wrong with our specs or our, our RFP, they, they panicked and said, oh, no, not at all. We thought it was in a few weeks. We'll get numbers to you right away. So, that's a vendor that we've had a business relationship with in the past and they've been very good to us and they've been great to work with, easy to work with. They understand the process. So that's the direction I think we're going to end up, I, I would like to end up going. The numbers they gave us are well within what we budgeted for and this, for the, the lease vehicles, for the unmarked vehicles. So that's, those are the factors. I think there is a national shortage, which maybe kept some people out of the arena in terms of making responses to the RFP. And then the two that we anticipated, those were the reasons they didn't.
Okay, and then one other question. The specifications that you put out, are these all modified vehicles to police requirements?
No, they're stock vehicles and then we, we retrofit them afterwards with the essential equipment. But again, these are unmarked cars, so there's fairly, fairly little in the way of upfitting. And there's no decals, there's no graphics. There's a light package and a radio package in there.
Okay, so it's not as extensive as, as the other vehicles that you would normally, or patrol vehicles?
Correct, not nearly.
And you're happy with this brand?
Very much so, yeah.
Okay, just wanted, sometimes you don't, you're not really happy, but you do it, but you are happy with it.
No, they've been very good and, and the product has been good and the, the company has been good to work with. So we've been pleased.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Chief, thank you Counsel Snyder. And Deputy Mayor Pendleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Maniscalco, refresh my memory, please, because I don't really recall. In our budget, how many original vehicles were requested? Five or four, and we reduced it by one?
Yeah, if I may, Deputy Mayor Pendleton, we, there's two different kind of categories of vehicles. One is out of account 442. And that's the, what I had initially requested was the four police marked cruisers, patrol vehicles. The council, through the approval process, reduced that to three. And that's separate than what this resolution is for. In account, I'd have to, it's a leases account, separate from this one. And that's a, a separate dollar figure, separate line item for the leases. And I don't know if you remember during the budget hearings, we talked about, there were, there are actually seven vehicles that are currently under lease with the police department. Four of those leases expire at the end of this month. So those are the four in question that this resolution pertains to. And the other two expire further out into this coming fiscal year or even beyond. So the, the four that you reduced to three remains at three. And that's, that's not what we're, that's not what I'm trying to solve here.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. Because I just, because I got a little concerned when we said we approved four and I wasn't thinking which set that we were talking about. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you Deputy Mayor Pendleton. Thank you Chief. Any other questions? Counsel Evans.
If I may, before we go on to voting on anything else on our agenda, I just wanted to point out that our public input still has an email address listed. So I'm a little concerned that if people were emailing in information to be included in public input, that it's listed on our agenda, but not being read at the meeting. For consideration as we continue through the agenda.
Thank you Counsel Evans.
I, I can ask staff member to go access that and then we do have a second public input section that we, if there's anything in there.
Okay, thank you.
If I may.
So we'll.
My only concern is that as we go on to vote things, sometimes we take that public input into consideration. So it, it may be important to consider what the public has emailed as we vote on some of these topics. I mean, we can move ahead if we want, I'm fine with that, but I just wanted to bring that up as a concern.
Well, can we, Mr. Maniscalco, can we track? Have we received any emails to that? Town council comments?
Let me find, let me find out if we've gotten any. And then based upon that, we'll see if we can determine what the topics are and then we'll let you know if there's something relevant to the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me. If you want, during, when you guys go into an executive session, I can go and access that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roberts is already accessing it, so.
Okay, we'll track that down, thank you. We, we're going to go on to item, oh, no we're not. I think we need to vote on.
Mr. Mayor, I see we're in the middle of a.
We need to vote on the vehicles, I think the chief would appreciate that. So, any other questions about the resolution for leasing the vehicles? All right, if no other questions, we'll go on to voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we'll go on to item 13D, a discussion of the pending list. Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came up as a topic of conversation at our agenda setting meeting, I think it was last week. And essentially, there's, there's a number of items on the pending list that were requested by members of the council who are no longer members of the council for various reasons. And some of those topics are not even relevant or possibly even accomplishable at this point. So, I, I just was kind of curious if, one, if you, if it's helpful still to you and two, if we wanted to go through and clean a lot of those up, if that was okay with all of you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. I think Deputy Mayor Pendleton? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the clerk of the council her opinion about the pendings list and how she may like to address this. I know for us counselors, that we were receiving it at every meeting, an updated list. However, I, I wouldn't mind receiving it once a month, an updated list once a month on what we've accomplished or what is still out there that needs to get done. But I believe our clerk of the council has some input on how she'd like to do this. Because I know she finds it beneficial.
Ms. Reed?
And that's fine, we can give it to the council once a month. But we'll leave it on, you know how we have the TC folder, so you can access it anytime you want.
Right, so it'll be in the folder on the laptop as opposed to a paper copy?
Right. And I'll just distribute it once a month.
That sound agreeable to everyone? And then what about the issue, there may be some items on there that are either past due or they've been accomplished? Do we, do we clean some of that up and, and eliminate those? Just to update it, is that okay?
Um, yeah, I mean, if you guys can go through.
I do believe that it was three pages and it's gone down to one and a half pages.
So we've done some cutting already?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, I believe so.
Okay, I, I would just say that if, if one of the counselors sees something that should be eliminated because we've done it, you know, finished it, or.
They can just contact me and we can take care of it.
Counsel Snyder?
Oh, um, yes, I would, there's, some of these things on here, I mean, they're going, like, as, as to the town manager's, what he said, they're going back like two and three years. So, and, and in some cases, they're really not even applicable anymore. So, and I notice on 1019, if you look at, I don't know if anybody has it in front of them, but there's two of the same thing plaque put up at John J. Mitchell Fairgrounds at Ry Street. I had originally put that on and then it's also down on with, with Erica Evans. So I don't know if that's the same thing, Counsel Evans, I'm not sure. But let's check, can we check that out? And if there's any of these that we can take off of here, I mean, I would definitely like to see that done. And I do have another question for Counsel Evans, just to take a look at the sign to be put up at Veterans Memorial Park in honor of Al Larson. I think that whole street thing changed, so maybe it's something different.
Um, so yeah, that had moved, if I can, that had moved to being named for the lap pool because of the involvement that he was. And actually, Counsel Lidecker says that it is actually in place already, apparently, so.
It's being, it's up there?
It's up there already. My, my son joined the swim team, so I see it a lot lately. But the sign is up there, right underneath, kind of underneath where the South Windsor Seals sign is, right behind, like that back building of the lap pool.
Great, so maybe this, Counsel Evans, if you can take a look at that, or Counsel Lidecker, if that's been met, as you said, then perhaps we can start taking some of these things off. And I know have, I have something on there as well. So I'll get right in touch with Deb directly, if that's okay? Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you Counsel Snyder. Thank you Counsel Evans.
I was wondering too, as far as that, if we might have, it says setting a date for unveiling, so it looks like that's still pending as far as the, the sign. So that might be something we have coming up as the unveiling of the sign for the Veterans, Veterans Memorial Park in honor of Al Larson. But my, my, the reason I had my line in was because of the, if we're going to be putting it on the drive, I'm wondering if we need to have the printed copies? We all have access through our laptops and through the technology. So I'm not sure, you know, the need for the printed version, in my opinion.
Totally up to the council, however you guys want to handle it.
Yeah, I don't think we need a printed version, right. Right. Okay, just post them to the, to the folder on the laptops. All right, thank you. Okay, thanks, we'll go on to item 13E, a discussion on the creation of an arts commission. Counsel Evans.
Thank you. So I just wanted to bring forward the idea of creating an arts commission. I know last year, we had had some discussion about limiting artwork on town property. And to me, that's backwards thinking. And I think that it's important that we grow and foster and find ways to encourage art in our town. So I thought the idea of creating a commission to work on that and develop that with artists in our town, with our, any groups and organizations who work on the arts might be involved in this as well as, you know, any community members. So just wanted to see what kind of interest there was for this. Having worked in education, you know, and working with children, how great it is to incorporate art into the lives and we encourage it at the age. And I think it's important that we as a community continue to encourage and foster and support the arts for all ages. So I just wanted to bring that forward to see if there was appetite for it, if it's something we wanted to look into doing.
All right, thank you Counsel Evans. Questions, comments? Counsel Manili.
Yes, I was just wondering, why, why a commission and not a committee? Is, are you looking for something more formal and more set in stone, or are you just looking for input? It's a great idea, but I just was wondering the, the need, the wording of a commission versus committee. I'm just looking for clarification on that.
I do think it's open for discussion and for what the council would be open to supporting. The idea of a commission, something that is going to be more sustainable, is something that would be more of interest to me. But I'm not saying that there's only one way to do this. So I think that's why it's important that we start as a discussion and figure out what would work best.
All right, thank you Counsel Manili. Thank you Counsel Evans. Any other questions? Counsel Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a great idea and, and art can be broad. It's a broader array of things. Do you think that this will have a specific focus on a specific art? Or will that be something that can be on a phased approach? Start with one type of art and then move on to others?
I think that there are many areas that it can work into. I mean, we could look into having an arts festival. You know, I look at Glastonbury where they have the painted, is it horses or cows in their town? Something like that to enrich in our community. You know, Manchester, they just commissioned artwork or a mural on one of the buildings in town. You know, many towns around us actually are working on arts commissions as well. Windsor is one of them, which is our neighboring town across the river. But, you know, so I think that there's so much that it could be and so much that it could, could do to really showcase our town's arts as well as to encourage arts for our citizens.
All right, thank you Counsel Lopez. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had this, this was brought up in 2018. And on, matter of fact, I have a set, I have minutes. There was a, there's currently, or there has been, a South Windsor Cultural Arts Committee that's been in South Windsor probably over 30 years. And it's been led and run by many different people, but there's been a few people that have been involved in it ever since it began. So, back in January of 2019, a group of people got together with, and with representatives from the public library, Mary Etter and somebody from the Wood Memorial Library, Jessica Glass of the Wood Library Association. And then Maureen Bourne was a, is a wood board member as well. So we talked about getting together and doing, taking that same South Windsor Cultural Arts Committee that's been together for over 30 years and bringing that back up together and, and bringing in more people and identifying strategy. We had goal, we set up goals and objectives to get to that. And there was quite a few meetings that were held after that, even in accordance with the Sustainable CT process that has been going on for, actually, and we're silver members now. But it was support arts and a creative culture, which is 3.2 on the Sustainable CT guideline, under those guidelines. But there were many meetings that were held and the primary goal of the group was to enrich the community in many different ways. Matter of fact, we had members from the South Windsor, the Down-to-Earth Garden Club, who talked about doing some type of arts with gardening around it. And there were so many different, you know, different types, a lot of it was visual arts, bringing the visual arts back. So, based on the fact that we had set up and had committees, I would probably, I don't know, I would recommend for people to, people on the council to think about taking that South Windsor Cultural Arts Committee and bringing it back to life and getting some new people. I've been in touch with one of the women that came to, came to several of those meetings and she was very interested in getting together visual arts section of that. So all of the, and I believe they are 501(c)(3) as well. So they can accept donations to, to help different, different types of artists. And also, we had, at that time, we had met with the Ashford Arts Council. I don't know if anybody's familiar, but Ashford has a tremendous arts council. Visual arts, music, every type of, of the arts that you can imagine. And they came and they gave us, they shared their mission statement with us and gave us a lot of information. So, and I know Andy, I have you, you were at that meeting as well. So let's hope you remember like I do, yes. Andy was there as well. And we tried to get things going and, and things got, started going and then, you know, at the end of August, we were going to, of 19, we were going to get together again and then COVID hit. So, everything kind of was suspended. But, you know, I'd love to share these minutes and all the discussions that have already occurred to help move this forward. And, and instead of having a commission and doing an ordinance, we, we should make it a committee. And there is a South Windsor Cultural Arts Committee and let's grow on that. These people have had a lot of experience, especially in the schools. I was on that 25, 30 years ago as well. So, and they, they mostly do music and concerts. But the people that run it now are very interested in bringing everything back together, getting all the visual. in bringing everything back together, getting all the visual arts and all that other stuff together. So, um, I think it might, I think it's a nice idea. I just think having it be a committee and using the resources we already have in place for people that really have donated a lot of time over the years, let's revitalize that or re-energize it and get it going. So those are just some comments that I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Council Snyder. If you can share some of those key notes, that would be great, with the rest of the council. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Oh, yes, Council Lopez?
Thank you, uh, Council Snyder, for that update. Um, the group that has been there for 30 years, you're saying that wants to get back together. So what made them not be together?
Well, they are still together. They just primarily focus on music. They hold several, maybe four or five concerts at Wood annually, where they bring in, um, independent people to do concerts. But previous to that, they used to do all sorts of visual arts and things like that, but people have just moved on, they moved out of town. It's just been around for so long. So that's why the re-energy, getting some new people in there would be a great idea to help move that forward. But all of the structure is there for everything that we would need.
And, and do they have a, um, a, some kind of a website or place where we can look at their statements and?
They did. I will check it and see, I will get a bunch of information together and send it to everybody through Deb. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Council Lopez. Thank you, Council Snyder. Counselor Evans?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's really important information. I think if we were to look at going ahead with a commission, that that would be a great resource to even tie them into it, and perhaps they could be, um, brought on board with that as well. So I think there's a lot of things that the town can do, um, above and beyond anything that we've done, um, previously. I mean, as far as even building an outdoor stage for performances or, um, you know, doing our own murals or, or things around town. I love seeing the signs, um, driving up the road. I think that's a great start of a way to bring in art and, and things around town that really can grow the arts for South Windsor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Evans. Uh, if there are no other comments, we'll move on to the next item. I'm keeping my eye on the eight o'clock, uh, public hearing, don't forget. And this is a discussion item on a strategic plan. Council Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, the strategic plan is something that is near and dear to most of our hearts. We've done it over the years, and it, of course, it's time to get redone. And with our town manager, everything kinda came to a standstill over the past year. Mr. Maniscalco was welcomed with the eastern quinine, the eastern, uh, the.
That's right.
The bugs, if you remember, the, the, the mosquitoes for a while. And then, um, luckily for, for him, he didn't have too much time before he was just thrust into the pandemic. So, um, I would just like to, um, really start getting our feet, digging our heels in with this and, and taking a look at, um, how we might move forward with a strategic plan that fits the town and its residents and how things are working. So if you can just quickly give us a little update, I mean, it shouldn't take a few minutes.
Certainly, um, just to kinda take us back to 2019, right at the beginning of 2020, I put a couple documents in your packet tonight, uh, including an outline for strategic planning that I had proposed back in that, uh, timeframe. I should say back in that era at this point. And, uh, as well as a draft resolution for the council to consider. Uh, the idea is to essentially, um, create a committee that can start to develop a vision for our community, first of all, which would be an overarching guiding statement, uh, the, basically what we wanna become when we grow up, kind of idea. And then, uh, from there, we would work with the council, as well as other roundtables and, uh, other, uh, outside entities to identify goals that we could then accomplish that vision through. And then we would work with the staff to create the, the objectives to accomplish those goals, um, which is a pretty standard, straightforward strategic planning process. Really, uh, first and foremost, and what's really kinda thrown a wrench in the strategic planning process over the last year especially, is the idea that, you know, getting people together has been difficult and, uh, almost next to impossible. And, uh, I think, uh, if we can start to talk about and look at, you know, a resolution to put together some type of a strategic planning committee, uh, we could start stepping forward in, in that process. Additionally, I would just note that in the resolution, you'll see that there is the option of developing a survey for surveying the community. Uh, I have been working on doing that and taking, uh, a, a survey that was issued back in 2018, bringing it up to date and issuing a similar survey, uh, to the community. So that way we have a benchmark from 2018 to today to actually look at as well. So I think there's a lot of work that we can do, but, um, probably the first thing to, to do would be to create that committee and then, uh, actually seat members of it and move forward with the process.
So I, this is a very different approach for strategic planning, at least from our, my point of view, from being on, on the councils, is that usually the council sets the strategic plan on where they believe they wanna go, based on conversations with the public. But you're changing this around and you're going directly to the public to get information right from the public, correct?
So the, the, the idea would be that we would be creating a committee who would be reaching out to the public. The committee would be appointed by yourselves, and that committee would then come back to you with recommendations. So at the end of the day, you still do have the final say in how that's gonna work. It's just taking the heavy lifting out of your hands and allowing the public to do it for you.
And as I understood it, you're working on a survey as well?
Uh, the committee would be, uh, issuing and conducting the survey for you, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. I think we really, really need to get the public heavily involved on where they wanna see us in five years or in 10 years. Um, so, you know, I absolutely approve of this approach, and hopefully we could get it going pretty soon. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Council Snyder. Mr. Maniscalco? Uh, I'm, I'm thinking about a timetable then, in terms of when either Council Snyder or Mr. Maniscalco, when you see this beginning. We talking about summer, fall?
Well, I mean, if you guys wanna, I mean, if you wanna, once we get the committee together.
Yeah.
You know, we can start moving from there. I would expect it's probably gonna be a 12-month process at the, at the minimum.
Right.
You know, um, because we're really taking a really hard look and working with everybody in the community so that everybody has the opportunity to have a say. That's the other part too.
And so I'm, I'm thinking if we go through the mechanics of it over the summer, by the fall, we'd have a committee set up, ready to go. And that's, that's the starting point in the fall, let's say.
Yeah.
That sound reasonable?
That would definitely, having that committee in place would definitely kick things off and get things started. So that would be, that would be the first step.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Council King?
Oh, there it is. So the only question that I had through you, Mr. Mayor, is, um, so I'm reading and it says that two members attend South Windsor Public Schools, says a committee of nine, correct?
I'm sorry, I?
It says a committee of nine. Furthermore, may be resolved, the committee should be appointed by the town council, made up of no more than nine members. Two members attend South Windsor Public Schools, two members consider themselves to be a senior citizen, representation of both genders, representation from both political parties, blah, blah, blah. My question is, so that's four, so we're still looking for five, and the other three people, the town manager, mayor, minority leader, they're not considered part of that committee? So it's actually 12?
They're, yeah, so overall number of people in the room would be 12.
Okay.
Typically, what you'll see is staff will be ex officio members, so you have the opportunity to participate but not vote.
Right.
So the voting members would be the, the nine.
Yeah, just wanted to just make it clear that it's nine plus three.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Council King. Any other questions? Council Kowalski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, so I'm just curious, the survey that would go out, Mr. Maniscalco, would, considering we've got two members who would be, uh, students in the school system, would that survey be going out to just voters or that's going out to everybody in town?
I would suggest we send it out to everybody in town. You know, one thought I had was maybe if we're able to secure the funding, we could mail it to every household, you know, with a return address, uh, envelope. Also, I had the thought that we could probably put it online and allow people to do it online. Now, there are some technological issues with that in terms of, you know, multiple people, or one person filling out that survey 10 times over and trying to disproportionately have their say. But, you know, those are things that we can overcome and, uh, work through.
And would there be a minimum age as far as responses that you would accept?
You know what? From my perspective, I, I almost think, you know, being involved in some other strategic planning processes in communities, some of the kids that come in, a five-year-old that walks through the door that says, hey, you know what? I really would like you guys to think about a new playground because I got a splinter on the playground. Some of that sort of stuff can be incredibly valuable. So I, I almost would rather not put an age limit on it.
Maybe one of the things we could consider is that if we do it online, it's, it's gotta come, each one has to come from an individual email address.
Yeah, there's ways around.
Right, I'm not sending 10 of these from my same email address.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If we see 10 splinters, Council Kowalski will know. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pendleton, can we hold your question till we, we have to go to the public hearing?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Reed, would you read the announcement for the public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that the South Windsor Town Council has set Monday, June 7th, 2021, at 8:00 p.m. in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Avenue, South Windsor, Connecticut, as a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on a proposed ordinance establishing a Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission, a copy of which is on file in the office of the town clerk, dated at South Windsor, Connecticut, this 27th day of May, 2021, attested to by Deborah W. Reed, Clerk of the Council.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Uh, before we begin the public hearing, Mr. Maniscalco, do we have anyone out in the lobby who also is looking to speak or just the folks that are in this room?
There could be people out in the lobby watching, uh, on the TV that would wanna come in and speak. They would need to come to the door. I do know, uh, Mrs. Perry's out there too, if they needed.
Okay. All right. So we'll begin the public hearing. Uh, who would like to start off? And please give your name and address as you speak to the, to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I do have some written comments on the public hearing.
Oh, okay. And we'll do that after the speakers?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Manili?
Um, when, when people come to podium, um, would you remind them to speak into the microphone? Because, um, when the last person came to podium, I couldn't hear anything.
Yes, okay, I will.
Thank you.
All right. Please speak, get as close to the mic as you can, Lisa. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Copper, and I live at One Autumn Drive. And I would like to submit testimony in favor of establishing a Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission. First, I would like to thank the Town Council, the Black Lives Matter Subcommittee, the Human Relations Commission, and the South Windsor Public Library for their three-part online program on racial and ethnic bias and its consequences. The series provided me with concrete information to help me understand the bias, the history of bias and racism in the United States and the effects that have continued to the present time. The goal of the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission will be challenging but necessary to continue to foster an inclusive community. I am particularly interested in the goal of providing community conversations about bias and racism as they exist today. I have read about many programs that other area towns, including Tolland, Vernon, Manchester, Glastonbury, Hebron, and Simsbury have held over the last year. Many of these towns also have similar commissions. Now that we're moving past our COVID isolation, I'm hopeful that we can have in-person discussions to deepen our understanding of the ways that bias and racism affect all of us. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, come on up. This is Plummer.
Okay, and the last time I was here, this is what I had to do to be heard at home, I hope, and to you. So here I am, this is the only way I know how to do it.
That's fine.
Uh, so before I begin, I must say to the Girl Scouts in South Windsor and to anybody who has not seen these signs, they just warm your heart. And it was what a, such a welcoming way to come here tonight. So to the Girl Scouts and everybody who participated in that, I thank you very, very much. And I thank you, Mr. Maniscalco, for allowing them to put it in front of Town Hall. I think it's absolutely perfect. My name is Daria Plummer. I live at 235 Orchard Hill Drive. Good evening to the members of the Town Council and to those at home. I'm here tonight because I read a little over a week ago in the J.I. that you were having a public hearing tonight on the Social Justice and Racial Equity Committee. And I have to tell you, it is extremely meaningful to me, and I hope I can explain that to you tonight. First of all, I do have an absolute recommendation for a change, it could be a formatting change, but in the ordinance, in five duties, I really recommend that you add a preface to it for clarity. You might wanna call it, "The duties of the commission is to work with town staff two, colon, and then each subletter after that, A through F, would follow with its descriptors." I just believe it adds much more clarity in reading that section. So thank you for that. Secondly, most of you know me, not all of you know me for all the years I've been here, but I taught 38 of my 39 years in South Windsor. I've been here for almost 54 years. And I hope you would consider me a considerate, kind, open-minded, fair, and hopefully somewhat of an intelligent person. What I'm about to say, and I had to write it down, because it comes from my heart and my personal experience. We all struggle of a race, America, Connecticut, our cities and towns, you, me, all in varying degrees. And each of us, no matter how we deny it, we come with some implicit bias or preconception based on our own personal histories and experiences. We can't help it. It is what is. And often we just don't see it at all. We can't ignore what has been ignored for generations because it makes us uncomfortable. We no longer live in a time when we can hide the reality of any situation, past or present. I mean, good lord, the internet just makes that right front, in, right in front of us. From owning slaves or the burning in Tulsa, to the World War II internment camps that confined Japanese-Americans in seven, seven U.S. states, to segregation laws, to today's Black Lives Matter movement. All of this history is today's reality. We cannot state that racism or social justice does not exist in South Windsor. Of course it exists, here and everywhere. It's a matter of degree and how much it impacts us. And it comes down to the one fact, what are we going to do about it? In 1996, I was told to my face by a very intelligent, strong teacher that I was prejudiced, not because of anything I had said or done to her, but because I was white and I did not understand the shoes she walked in every single day as a teacher in Bridgeport. And you know what? She was right. It wasn't an accusation, it was a statement of fact. I could not understand it then, and I thought I might know, but really, did I? Did I? Do I really now? I don't think so. Two weeks ago, I learned of something that happened not so long ago in a nearby town. People cash their paychecks Thursdays or Fridays at local grocery stores. You know what? If you were white, you weren't asked for an ID. But if you were black, you were. Think about that. Now look at this another way. Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Snyder, Mr. Paterna, Mrs. Evans, Mrs. Lydecker, Mrs. Manili, Mrs. Pendleton. I need to see your ID. Mr. Lopez, Mr. King, I don't. I need to see your ID. I don't need to see theirs. How does that make you feel? Fair? I don't think so. Doesn't exist anymore in that store. But it did up until a short time ago. This proposed commissions and goals are pointed and deliberate. To establish such a commission is forward-thinking in my view. It gives us as a community an opportunity to look at ourselves in a mirror and to begin educating ourselves. And to what extent disparities may exist in racial, ethnic, economic, and gender hires or actions or policies or things that might be said. Incidentally, this is what we need to know and then take the actions to address them. There's nothing to be afraid of, nothing, nothing to fear. the actions to address them. There's nothing to be afraid of, nothing, nothing to fear. Knowledge is power, and power shared is the foundation of strength, growth, and prosperity. Establishing this commission is a smart and the right thing to do. So kudos to the Black Lives Matter Subcommittee for its proposal, and to each of you counselors for bringing this ordinance forward. I urge your full support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, someone else ready to speak? Yeah, yeah, if you guys could switch places, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Brenda Petiri, and I live at 49 Wood Pond Road here in South Windsor. I came here tonight because for the last year, I've been very concerned about our country. I've been really concerned about the us-and-them atmosphere that exists in this country. And I have a very personal reason also, in that I have friends that have been deeply affected by what's been happening recently in our country. They're scared. They're...
I mean, here.
Some of them are fearful.
A little closer, Brenda, I'm sorry.
Some of them are fearful, you know, for the first time, and some of them are fearful, and it's been, they're just at the surface underlying. And they're fearful because they're black, they're Asian, or they're gay. And these people are important in my life. So that's why I decided to come this evening. I have no training and formal training and education, but for the last part of my career, for 10 years, I taught at Capital Community College. And then when I was leaving there and transitioning into retirement, I decided I wanted to do some volunteer work. So I became a volunteer math tutor at Burr School with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. During this time, I had eye-opening experiences. I mean, I grew, I had my experiences here in South Windsor and in my life before I moved here 40 years ago. But there, I started to see the students, I started to see the resources, I saw parents and the difficulties they went through, and the difficulties that students had to overcome in order to learn in the inner-city school where I was volunteering. And I saw teachers that were so incredibly dedicated. And then I saw other teachers who would talk about students in ways that I'm sure they didn't realize sounded so racially motivated, but that, to me, really made me see a lot of different things. So the other final thing there, when I was at the schools, I really enjoyed doing the volunteer work as a tutor. And I was going to do it for two years, and I ended up being there 10 years. And I tried to get friends to become involved because I enjoyed it so much. And down to every single one of my friends that I asked, not because of any reasons that were, you know, evil or misguided, but they were afraid to go into Hartford. They were afraid to go in and be around Hartford. And what that amounted to is, with the information they had, they thought the people that were in Hartford were dangerous. And I, through my experiences, had had conversations and asked questions, and I had developed and become more interested and caring about the students and our similarities, rather than the differences. So what I would like to see is have this commission to be established. My part that I would like is the dialogues, the conversations, for people to be able to talk together and realize the differences and the similarities that exist between us. You may change people's minds about certain things, you may not change people's minds. But at least the information will be out there, and people can talk together and share ideas. I'd like to see us to go from, you know, the us-and-them to the you-and-me, because in you-and-me, you can find commonality. And when you find commonality, you build strands that build communities. And I think it's only going to make South Windsor a stronger and better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker? Come on up.
My name's Adam Wood from 9 Rustic Lane. I'm here today to talk about the commission. One, I think it's important.
Adam, stay close to it, yeah.
One, I do think it's important that we have a commission. But first, I want to say, I wear this shirt right here for two reasons. One, to humanize our police department, to ensure that they are cared for, are taken care of, and are supported. They represent men and women and people from all walks of life in our community who help provide justice and safety to this community. And one of the reasons I moved to this community was because not only did I have friends and family that lived here, it was a great place to live, a great education system, and is a safe, safe place because of our police. Because every single day, they go out there, regardless of who they are when they get home, and they take care of us. They bring justice like we had in our community. They brought swift justice to a killer in our community and helped them get justice and helped them get closure. And they didn't see her as black or white. They saw her as a South Windsor citizen and as an American. I also wear this shirt because we need to humanize Americans, humanize people. We need to see each other, not by the color of our skin, but the content of our character. And if you've heard that someplace, I'm pretty sure you've heard it all over the place. But we're not following that anymore. We're so focused on our race, our sex, our ethnic background, and that's just a small part of who we are. And often, we have no way, we have no, that doesn't, we can't control that. I can't control the color of my skin. I can't control the sex I was born or who I love. We need to accept all that. But at the same time, we cannot allow us to judge each other so openly and look for racism, and look for bigotry, and look for hate. Because when you look with your eyes in that lens, that's all you see. I served in the military for 20 years. After 9/11, I was in Iraq, I was in Afghanistan. Six weeks later, I was in Iraq. Five years later, I was in South Korea. Five years after that, I served with brothers and sisters from all walks of life, people that I consider family. I would take a bullet for them at any given point. Any given point, I would die for them, and they would die for me. And I'm here to let you know, many of them did die for me. Many of them died for you. And you know what? We didn't see race. We saw camouflage, but we didn't see race. We saw each other for Americans, people willing to stand up for that flag for different reasons. From the kid from down south in Georgia, to the kid all the way out in Compton, who had wanted to do something better with his life, wanted to get out, make a difference, service country, to the person that lived up in Alaska, had never seen anybody at all, another person of color at all. But we came together, and we served, and we loved each other. And the police departments, they're full of people like that. And the school systems are full of people like that. My three-year-old son, he doesn't know color. He comes home and loves all the kids around him. He looks at the kids, just wants to play with them. And I don't want this commission to be one of those things where he comes home and says, Daddy, why am I an oppressor? Why am I evil? Because I've seen it happen. You're seeing it all across America. We're turning each other against each other because of things that nobody ever did to another person. We need to start having a character commission. We need to teach our kids in these schools, and here in South Windsor, how to be entrepreneurs, how education is the key, how to respect our police, how to respect our military, our elders, how to do good things in the community. We don't need commissions to tell us all that, because when we come together on those kind of character commissions, everything starts to solve itself a little bit easier. We need to start looking at those things, rather than say, there's bigotry and racism everywhere. I guarantee you right now, I can make a laundry list of things that could be considered as racism. Doesn't mean it is. It's about what you see in your heart. It's about what you have in your heart when you make something. You may not know, you may, you know, you may say, I didn't understand that. But that's your job to educate somebody and say, hey, I know you didn't mean it. I know it's in your heart. But let me tell you what it means to me. We need to start doing that on a one-on-one basis. We need to stop making people fearful to be proud of where they come from. We don't need to be walking into schools with quotas about, you need to be this, and you need to be that, and you need to be this. We need this to be that. We don't want our kids to be pigeonholed into some 10% of this, you need to be 10% of that. Equality already exists in this country. The Declaration of Independence guarantees that. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, not the guarantee, the pursuit. It says that you can pursue your dreams. And people from all walks of life have come here for generations, died trying to get here. They came through Ellis Island, they migrated here with their families. They came here from everywhere around the globe. And I'm here to tell you, this is the greatest country in the world, bar none. I've seen actual oppressors. I've seen kids strapped with bombs because they're girls, because women are less. I've seen people, there's no diversity in some of these countries. You think in South Korea, or Afghanistan, or Iraq, there's diversity councils? No. You wouldn't last one week out there when you talk about that stuff. And not that it's not important. It is important. The reason why I say that is because I see far too many people striking down this country as the worst country in the world. This country is so much better than we realize, and we need to start letting our citizens know how great it is. And when there's bigotry in our community, we need to stand up to that, side by side, and strike that down. We need to make sure that when something is racist, it's racist. We need to shoot that person down and say, you are not part of our community. But people are afraid to talk to each other. They're afraid to say the wrong word. They're afraid that they're going to lose their business because they said he, or she, or they, or it, or whatever it may be. We're living in fear of having conversations with each other that could cure all the problems we're seeing today. But we can't have honest conversation because we're not really willing to do that. And I think this commission is important. And I do hope that you all put forward the effort to make sure that all the citizens, all the viewpoints, whether they be left, right, middle, whoever it may be, are brought into consideration. And you think about the town and the place that we live in, and understand that we want the best. Because equality is the ability for you to pursue your dream. Doesn't mean you're going to get it. But equity tells you, we all have the same ending. We all guarantee you the same ending, and that doesn't end well. It's called communism. Equity eventually ends up into communism because we force people into fields. Everyone's the same. But it doesn't take into consideration the effort that it takes to put in, the sacrifice, the generations of moms and dads putting everything on the line to give their kids a better life, all to have that taken away because everyone has to have the same ending. Part of America is the ability for us to follow our dreams and fail and succeed. Because every time you fail, you rise up, you build character, and you become successful. And this council needs to work on focusing on those things in our communities. They're going to prepare our children for the next generation. Because children at three, four, five, they don't see color. They don't see race. They don't see gay, straight. They don't. But when you start talking about it every single moment of every single day, that's all they become ingrained about. They're to get enough from the media and Facebook, tearing at them down, coming at them every which way. They don't need school systems and councils and everything to tell them, well, your friend is how evil. Well, your friend has prejudice in his heart. No, they don't. Kids don't have that. Bigots have that. Hateful people have that, but not kids. And that's my worry. I don't want my son, in a couple of years, this kid who's got the heart of gold and overcome so much, we spent six months in the hospital when he was born, at one pound, didn't know if he was going to live or die. I overcame so much for him. I've sacrificed everything for him. And I want him to grow up in this town. I want him to go to the school. I want him to graduate and do big things. But I don't want him ever to come home, Daddy, and say, Daddy, are you a bad person? Is Mom a bad person? Is our neighbor a bad person? Why am I this? Why am I that? I don't want that. I don't want any of your kids to do that. I want your kids to come home and say, hey, I had a great day. And that's why I worry because I've seen this happen across the United States. I've talked to friends where it starts out great, and all of a sudden, we allow certain people that are venomous onto these councils with ulterior motives and agendas, and it drives us apart. We've had too much of that. We've had too much of that in the history of this country, too much of that over the last six, seven, eight years. And I don't know where we became this evil, hard country of racism. I really don't. Because after 9/11, it was the most patriotic country. I couldn't walk into a bar without somebody shaking my hand. And now, 20 years later, it seems like it's worse than ever before. Because we've allowed the media, we've allowed other people that are venomous and are toxic, we allowed the devil in the back door to seep in our ear and say, your neighbor's wrong. Your neighbor's evil. He's a bad person. No, we're not. We're not that.
Mr. Wood, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up because we've got other speakers. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, I'm going to wrap it up. And that's all I'm going to say is that I do appreciate and support the council. But please keep that in mind, all those things I talked about today, because it is important. It is important that we keep that focus. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker? Yes?
My name's Jason Wasserman. I'm at 75 Peterson Way. And first, I want to thank the gentleman before us for his service. But I want to say that it's easy for a white man to stand here and say, I don't see color. I've talked to many people who, they don't have the, they don't have the opportunity to not see color. Because they have, they have a color, and they go out into the world, and they're treated differently. You know, we've seen it on TV. But again, you talk to people, we have, you can see it in terms of the number of people that are in our prisons that don't match our general population percentages. You see it in the way people are treated. You look in this room, I don't see, there aren't too many people of color sitting, coming up here to talk today because of the way our town is made up. I think, I didn't know what I was going to say when I came tonight, but I had to respond to that. I do support a commission. I don't trust yet that this town will get it right. I've been discriminated against myself, and I know it's, I'm not a person of color, but for other reasons, a few of you know. I've seen my rabbi attacked. And I just hope that when the commission is formed, that the commission will seek out the experts, not just talk to people, but find folks, whether it's at UConn or Yale, or who are really studying the issues, and use that for, for making decisions and moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Our next speaker? Yes?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'd just like to begin, well, so first of all, my name is Noah Frank, and I'm a resident at 130 Scott Drive. And I'd just like to start off by responding to a couple of things. I had some thoughts written down before I came in here today. I love this country. But it's because I love this country that I can question it, that I can look and be surrounded by my flag and feel proud, but recognize the complexity of this history that we all are sharing it. And I think to approach this from a number of different perspectives, it's with that complexity that I am very proud to support this move, to make this commission here in South Windsor. I just, I just wanted to start off by saying that you can love your country and challenge that country, and challenge that history, and look it right in the face and say, that's not the road we're going to go down anymore. So just wanted to start off with that. So a proper good evening to all the town councillors here tonight. I come to you tonight as a student, a friend, and a concerned citizen. And I think that it's incredibly important tonight that not only do we recognize, you know, the seriousness surrounding this conversation, but also the historical context. I think that's sort of what's, what's been missing in this conversation so far. Nearly two weeks ago, I had an experience where I participated in a wonderful candlelit vigil to honor the one year, the one-year anniversary of the passing of George Floyd, who was murdered in Minneapolis. The legacy of that day teaches us that freedom is not always free. And the rot of systemic racism is not something that we can afford to ignore. And it's crucial that we confront our challenges, just as I said a second ago. We learned much over the last year, but none of that's particularly new. We've known this legacy. And people of color know this legacy because we approach this world, as Daria said a couple of speakers ago, with our own implicit biases, with our own interpretations of the world. And I think to believe that all are on a level playing field would just not do proper justice to that conversation. And I think to believe that all are on a level playing field would just not do proper justice to that conversation. And I consider myself extremely lucky to have grown up in a place like South Windsor. I made my best friends here. I had a great time in the school system, and I felt extremely safe. But it was only in leaving this town, to go where I'm going to be a senior at UConn next year, to learn about the worldwide perspectives, and that informed my return in a way that I'm extremely grateful for. I'm surrounded in this room by a lot of leaders who have helped to join this fight, and who have really made progress, who are not sitting on the sidelines, who are getting involved and saying that this is a conversation that needs to be had. We know that making needed changes will always deliver us with history on our side. A commission dedicated to the proposition of creating a more diverse community is one that can only make us all stronger. And I do believe that the local government has a very unique ability to solve these issues. The directness of our focus is hard to be lost when we sit neighbor to neighbor and friend to friend. Last year, in the wake of the 2020 election, I felt concerned about the course of this country, feeling proud, but with a qualified proudness. And I sat down with a couple of friends, and we decided that we wanted to do our best to bring a new voice, a new perspective, to both South Windsor and beyond. And it's through this continued conversation that I'm just very grateful for the space to participate. So I'd like to thank Councilor Evans in particular for your hard work on the Black Lives Matter Subcommittee, and of course, putting this together, as well as everybody on the town council, who's played a tremendous role, the Black Lives Matter Subcommittee and the Human Rights Commission, and everybody else beyond and beyond. I'm enthusiastic for this commission to advance, and I really do look forward to seeing the positive changes that this commission is gonna bring in making sure that South Windsor is an accountable, safe, and welcoming place to live. So thank you for your time. Thank you for the space.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker.
All right. Hear me at home? Thumbs up. Sorry, I'm a teacher, so I have to check in. So, good evening, Mayor Paterna, town councillors. Congratulations, Councilor King. You fit in right up there on the table. My name is Madison Gonzalez. I live on 1015 Ellington Road, where I have resided for nearly my entire life. And for the record, it's G-O-N-Z-A-L-E-Z, with an accent over the A. I'm a 2017 graduate from South Windsor High School, and I'm proud to stand in front of you today as a recent graduate from the University of Connecticut with a degree in urban and community studies. I will continue my studies at UConn this fall, when I enter the master's program in social work. I am here tonight to voice my support for the proposed Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission. As a young child, I remember being hyper-aware of my race in this town. It was clear that I, my family, we were different from my white peers, not only in our name, but in our food and in our hair. And thank you, Mr. Wood, for reminding me to be so proud of those things. In my time at South Windsor Schools, I did not learn about my ancestors or other people of color, instead learning about Christopher Columbus and his successes, or the generosity of slave masters. It was in my studies at UConn that I learned about structural racism and unconscious biases. Through my coursework and personal experiences, I studied multiple instances of injustices, as well as the effects of those moments on the generations of families of color that followed, mine included. It is important to note that I have watched the Board of Education and school administration move in the right direction, creating their own Equity Council made up of school staff and administrators. We might still have a ways to go, but we have certainly made progress within our schools thus far. The proposed Social Justice and Equity Commission is an opportunity to extend our schools' programs into town departments, most notably the Parks and Recreation Department, who work very closely with our children as well. Additionally, it's an opportunity to facilitate growth for parents in town through community conversations, just as their children will receive in school through structured curriculum. As an adult and as an aspiring social worker, I can confidently say that all adults have room to learn. If we as a town can provide those platforms, we should continue to do so. Our town is becoming increasingly more diverse. Families of colors deserve to feel safe and welcomed into our community. I look forward to the creation of the commission and working towards a more accepting and inclusive town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker. Anyone else? Do we have anyone outside? I know Mr. Summer is out there.
Yeah, I don't believe there's anybody else out there.
Mr. Maniscalco, you have a couple of emails to read, then?
Just checking. Well, I'll read these. I'll get started reading if we have anybody. Oh, I guess not. Okay. First letter is from Claire Conroy. "To whom it may concern, my name is Claire Conroy. My husband and I lived in South Windsor for the past five years. As future adoptive parents, we are doing many things to prepare ourselves. One of the most important ones is studying racial equity and social justice. We are both white, and therefore, we do not have the same lived experiences as our neighbors of color. As a white woman, I have the privilege of having my voice heard as an educator and a resident of the town. I strongly support the proposals laid out in the document regarding the commission. I believe that our schools should reflect our diversity. According to Ed's site, as of October 1st, 2019, this was a rough breakdown of racial identification in our district. Fifty-five percent of our students identify as white, six percent as black or African-American, five percent as two or more races, nine percent of Hispanic or Latino of any race, and 25% Asian. We have phenomenal teachers in this district, but they do not represent our diverse student body. Ninety-four point nine percent of teachers identify as white in the same report. As a doctoral student, I studied disproportionate representation through the lens of race. In Connecticut, we have one of the highest opportunity gaps in the country. Loosely defined, that means that our students of color do not have equitable access to the same high-quality education that our white students do. Therefore, I encourage our community to ask the following questions when considering why this proposal is so crucial. What am I teaching my children about race, equity, and culture? What do I understand about race, ethnicity, and culture? What is my race identity, and why is it important? What experiences have I had or been denied due to my race? What about people who do not look like me? If you're thinking to yourself at this moment that white privilege does not exist, or that one's racial identity does not have an impact on one's lived experiences, I urge you to reframe your thinking. I encourage you to complete the brief but powerful activity by Peggy McClintock, entitled "White Privilege: Unpacking the Invisible Knapsack." I've attached it to my email. I provide you with a series of questions asked by Dr. Daphina Lazarus Stewart in a March 30th, 2017 article entitled "Language of Appeasement." Diversity asks, "Who's in the room?" Equity responds, "Who is trying to get in the room but can't? Whose presence in the room is under constant threat of erasure?" Inclusion asks, "Has everyone's idea been heard?" Justice responds, "Whose ideas won't be taken as seriously because they aren't in the majority?" Diversity asks, "How many more of pick any minoritized identity group do we have this year than last?" Equity responds, "What conditions have we created that maintain certain groups as the perpetual majority here?" Inclusion asks, "Is this environment safe for everyone to feel like they belong?" Justice challenges, "Whose safety is being sacrificed and minimized to allow others to be comfortable maintaining dehumanizing views?" Diversity asks, "Isn't it separatist to provide funding for safe spaces and separate student centers?" Equity answers, "What are people experiencing on campus that they don't feel safe when isolated and separated from others like themselves?" Inclusion asks, "Wouldn't it be a great program to have a panel debate Black Lives Matter? We had a Black Lives Matter activist here last semester, so this semester, we should invite someone from the alt-right." Justice answers, "Why would we allow the humanity and dignity of people or our students to be the subject of debate, or the target of harassment and hate speech?" Diversity celebrates increases in numbers that still reflect minoritized status on campus and incremental growth. Equity celebrates reductions in harm, revisions to abusive systems, and increases in support for people's life chances, as reported by those who have been targeted. Inclusion celebrates awards for initiatives and credits itself for having a diverse candidate pool. Justice celebrates getting rid of practices and policies that were having disparate impacts on minoritized groups. It is not enough to leave a seat available at the table if a person does not feel comfortable joining the conversation, or does not have the means to. You do not have to have the skill to join a discussion on racial equity and social justice. You only need the will. That is why I strongly support the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission. I look forward to seeing future steps towards rebuilding South Windsor. Thank you for your time, Claire Conroy. The next letter I have is from Elizabeth McGuire, 89 Heritage Drive. "Good evening. I'm writing to support the creation of a Town Commission on Social Justice and Racial Equity. In South Windsor, we pride ourselves on being a welcoming community. And while I believe that we are, encouraging and embracing diversity must be an ongoing effort, this commission will ensure that we are actively engaged in that process. A town with people of different races, religions, gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, and age, as well as varying income levels, creates a rich and dynamic town where residents share different perspectives, and most importantly, learn from one another. Towns must evolve and change to remain dynamic. Encouraging and embracing diversity helps communities stay vital. Even on the local level, we should remember the words of Abraham Lincoln, who said in his Gettysburg Address that we must strive to 'form a more perfect union.' Many surrounding towns have taken the lead on establishing similar commissions, and South Windsor should do the same. Our town must make every effort to create a climate of fairness and inclusion in our schools, town government, and the community at large." And the last one I have here is from Cody Guarnieri. I apologize, I did not say your last name correctly. "Dear Mayor Paterna and town councillors, I thank you for this opportunity to write you to express my support of the proposal for the establishment of a Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission in the town of South Windsor. While the opinions expressed in this submission are my own, I offer a brief introduction to my background. I am a resident of South Windsor since 2013. I live on Quarry Brook Drive with my wife, Julianne, and our three young children. I am also a partner with the Law Office of Brown, Pandilleras, and Scott, LLP, in Hartford, Connecticut. My law practice is focused mainly on criminal defense matters and civil litigation before the courts of the state of Connecticut, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Federal District of Connecticut. I am a James W. Cooper Fellow of the Connecticut Bar Foundation, as well as a Fellow of the American Bar Foundation. I serve on the House of Delegates and as the Vice Chair of the Criminal Justice Section of the Connecticut Bar Association. I also serve on the Board of Directors and as the Co-Chair of the Criminal Law Section of the Hartford County Bar Association. In my role as a Fellow of the Connecticut Bar Foundation, I was part of the launch, the Constance Baker Motley Series on Systemic Racism and Racial Inequality, which is a joint venture between the Connecticut Bar Association and the Connecticut Bar Foundation. I sit on the Steering Committee of the same. I've helped to produce sessions on voting rights with U.S. Representative Johanna Hayes, policing, as well as creating roundtables within the legal community to discuss ideas and topics that came from the series, including having conversations about racism and the rule of law in modern America. It is my strong belief that one of the greatest threats to the rule of law is systemic racism and institutional inequality, both real and perceived. Disparate access to or treatment by government is an important issue that our leaders at every level should continue to address. We are almost 250 years into the American experiment, and experimentation requires changing variables for the sake of discovery and improvement. Having reviewed the proposed ordinance for establishing the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission, I believe it is an excellent step in advancing the goals of equality and justice in our community and building on public support and respect for our local institutions. Additionally, having reviewed recent minutes of the council, I recognize that there has been some question of avoiding redundancy or overlapping duties of various public boards and commissions. I completely agree that avoiding redundancy and streamlining government, where possible, is an admirable goal as well. However, I do not believe that the proposed Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission's duties substantially overlap with those of other boards or commissions. Moreover, I believe that the expressed duties and functions of the proposed commission, including offering anti-racism and anti-bias training to town employees and officials, fostering community discussion and awareness of topics in social justice and diversity, and ensuring town policies and procedures reflect these high aspirations, among others, are important enough to justify some amount of governmental redundancy. Again, I thank you for this opportunity to be heard and would respectfully ask that the council approve the ordinance for the formation of the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission."
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Was that it for letters?
That's all I got.
Emails?
Oh. I have a public, yes, I have a public input that was sent to me to read into the message. Actually, I went to the town council website, but is it okay if I read it in?
Yes.
It's just from a...
That's something we all receive, then, right? I think they remember that.
I believe so, yes.
This is from Roy Norman, 158 Homestead Drive, South Windsor. "I am pleased that you are giving discrimination and racism in our town a priority. It is hard to believe that it exists. Certainly, you have given it a lot of thought based on the draft ordinance. I can't attend your meeting tonight, so here are a few of my comments. One, I question whether you can structure the organization as proposed, given the minority representation law. You have left out a major group, the Asian-American Pacific Island Group, AAPI. This covers South Asia or India. Next, you should be collaborating with the Schools Department Equity Council. Number four, this is a lot to expect of a group of volunteers. You should expect to have some experienced staff to support this project. Number five, specifying monthly meetings should be changed to regular meetings. Much can be accomplished outside of meetings. And six, consider making the group an advisory committee to the council initially. That way, you can do the recruiting, get the committee established, and then make it a commission when it is fully functioning." Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Council Snyder. Any other input? So I think we had, one other person came in, would like to speak? Yes, come on up. Just give us your name and address before you speak.
My name is Dan Edwards, 131 Hilton Drive. I apologize for my appearance, doing a little landscaping and listening to the town council meeting, and I hadn't planned to be here, obviously, in flip-flops, but upon listening to prior comments, I had to come, especially once I realized there was no opportunity for a hybrid meeting. To the person that spoke earlier and said it was easy for a white male to make a comment, okay, you're certainly welcome to feel that. I'm also hyper-aware of race, though. As the proud father of a beautiful, now twelve-year-old Haitian-American. To the person before me, a few emails ago, who spoke about going through the adoption process, reach out to me. I'm happy to share my experience. I'm a white male. I have a beautiful, twelve-year-old Haitian-American. I'm very happy to help you. But my simple, really very, very simple question tonight is, why do we need a separate committee? As this meeting has already proven, tonight... As this meeting has already proven, tonight, we have existing committees. They don't meet. Why? Take a look, if you don't, if you doubt me, take a look at the town council website. Take a look at the committees. Take a look at the committees that have not met in months, years. There are multiple of them. It's disappointing. I'd really like the council to take it, do one thing tonight, if they do anything, and that's to take a step back and say, am I doing the right thing? I'd also like to remind you of a couple things. And it was advice I was given when I was aboard, on the Board of Directors of a $30 million book retailer. There are certain things to say when a shareholder, or a stakeholder, or a person that you represent comes to you and asks you for something. Let me, it's 10 words, let me look into this and get back to you. You don't have to bring every idea, but what that person will appreciate is the fact that you're looking into something. Doesn't mean you have to bring an idea to the table, especially if there are committees that already exist. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other speakers? Well, before you sit down, oops. Did you come in to speak for the public hearing? No, okay, all right, thank you. Any other speakers for the public hearing then on the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission discussion tonight? All right, yes?
My name is Braden McNaul. I live at 74 Miller Road. I just wanted to answer the last gentleman's question.
Stay close there, Braden, yeah.
I just wanted to answer the last gentleman's question. This commission is 100% necessary, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we will, with the council's permission, we'll close the public hearing at this point. Ms. Reed?
It's customary to do a poll.
A straw poll?
Yep.
Yes, so as an unscientific poll, we'll ask folks who are here tonight, after hearing discussion and reading the information about the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission, how many of you would support the creation of such a commission? Please keep your hands up so we can do a count. One, two, three, four, it's like seven, okay? Those who would oppose? No, this is a resolution, this is a public hearing, then it will be brought back as a resolution to the council. Right, right. All right, so it's seven to four. We did probably have a few people who left after they spoke. All right. Thank you all for participating, really appreciate the time that you've taken to join us tonight. All right, we will move on to, I think we, Deputy Mayor Pendleton, you had one more comment about the discussion on the last topic, strategic plan.
Yes, sir, I do, it's from Mr. Maniscalco. Mr. Maniscalco, the next step that you would like to take with the strategic planning, if I could suggest or may suggest, the resolution that you've given us as a draft resolution, are you asking us to look this over and get back to you with any of our inputs on this resolution, so then it can come forward at council meeting?
Yeah, so my, my thought was that we would probably have this as a discussion item amongst the nine of you at your next meeting, so that way we could get an understanding together as to what the council, as a whole body, would like to approve. Rather than having individual input outside the meeting, I think it'd be best to do it that way, probably the most efficient way to get it moving forward.
Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and just all of us can review this draft between now and then?
Correct.
And the purpose? Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Pendleton. Now, I believe, Deputy Mayor, we also, at this point, move the exec, two items from the executive session.
Mr.?
Seventeen B and C up to this point, right after the public hearing, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for a point of information, I know that there were questions about public comment. We do have a couple of public comment, but none of them are related to items that are on the agenda, so if it's okay, we'll take those up at the, the public comment section at the end.
We can do one more, yes, we have one more session.
Although, I don't know if there's other people here just to make public comment, if you want to do that before you go into executive session.
Before we go to executive session?
Maybe?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, would that be right if we did the second public comment, because there may be some folks who want to make some comments about other items on the agenda? And then we'll go to the-
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Then we'll go to the public session.
Absolutely.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I just ask, we, we didn't modify, when we modified the agenda, we didn't talk about moving that up.
We did not.
No, you didn't.
So you'll have, you'll have to suspend the rules.
I'd like to make a motion to, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to move the public input, item 15, up behind 13F, to address the public input.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
So we're suspending the rules in order to move public input up to this point? All right, all those in favor, aye? Aye, any opposed, nay? All right, we'll start with public input. Mr. Maniscalco, you have some emails to read, and if any folks would like to make public comment after he finishes, all right? Thank you.
Okay. Dear, this is from Robert Dickinson. Dear South Windsor Town Council members, often, South Windsor has missed opportunities to include the addition of sidewalks or multi-use side paths as part of new housing and business developments. The inclusion of these sidewalks and paths abutting these developments would allow for safe pedestrian bicycle community connectivity and would greatly improve the quality of life here in South Windsor. Sometimes, however, there are special problems at a particular development which result in installation cost being much higher than usual in order to include these sidewalks or paths. These problems can end up creating an unusual hardship for the developer and may even end up canceling the planned development entirely. In these situations, I would like to suggest that when the cost of developers of including sidewalks or multi-use paths on an arterial or connector roads are considerably higher than normal, that consideration be given to assisting the developers. One way this might be accomplished is by offering a limited tax abatement to the developer to cover part, or part of the excessive costs of the sidewalks or multi-use side paths. This would allow a possible development to proceed and also help increase the number of sidewalks or multi-use paths in town. Sincerely, Robert Dickinson. This is from Mr. Dave McDonald, 79 Laurel Street. Mayor, councilors, we apologize for sending such a lengthy statement as we read, as was read at the last town, at the last council meeting. Mr. Maniscalco was correct in saying that you heard the facts set forth in the, in the statement. We hope that you listened. What you didn't hear were one question, were our questions to you concerning the facts, and you're continuing to ignore our plight and our plea to you to accept your responsibility to us to provide one of the proven methods of traffic calming to stop the speeding on our road. Looking back at, looking back at, at past council meetings, we believe that there is an open item from the June 1, 2020 council meeting. During the meeting, Deputy Mayor Pendleton indicated that she wasn't sure of the accuracy of statements we sent in an email that was read previously at that meeting. She asked for a report from Mr. Dolittle six months from June 1 concerning our comments. We've not been able to find the six-month report to the deputy mayor. We have received an email from Mr. Dolittle dated November 4, 2020, approximately five months from the June 1 council meeting, indicating that the speeds decreased after the first survey and did not change significantly, significantly between the second and the last surveys. While the traffic was slowed down, it does not appear this was due to painted lines. We believe Mr. Dolittle refers to the surveys conducted by the South Windsor Police Department as his basis for the decreased speeds statement. But as we indicated at the last council meeting, the agency's recaps of the data are flawed. We are asking, has the council received a similar report from Mr. Dolittle? Dave McDonald, 79 Laurel Street. The last email I have is from Christopher Bernard. There's a number of links to different websites. They're www.foxnews.com, Memorial Day Weekend, Crime, Gun Violence, Bloodshed, Holiday Break, as well as foxnews.com, U.S. Former BLM Leader Rashad Turner, Ugly Truth. And it says, funny how things are starting to be just as we all said would happen, yet you all supported the bloodshed, the looting, the burning, the harming of police and first responders. Shame, and then I'm not going to read the rest of this because it is a personal attack. And that is all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Public input, Mr. Dickinson, I know that we read your email. Do you have another comment, or that's it? Okay. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Yes?
Okay, I'm back. My name is Braden McNaul, 74 Miller Road. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Town Manager, and Town Councilors, I'm here today to speak about public input. There are many people in our town that are not available for in-person meetings. Many people work evening hours and are not able to attend. There may be others in town who may find it difficult to attend meetings in person, for example, older adults, people with disabilities, and those who continue to have cautions about exposure to COVID. Going back to the old way of public comment is taking a step backward and restricts the public's voice. We should be making public input process as easy as possible, not more restrictive. I encourage the Town Manager and Town Council to continue the practice of allowing emailed statements and phone calls to be entered into the record so that citizens of this town are able to easily provide their opinions. This easier and more accessible way of providing public input was one of the positive aspects of COVID that should be continued. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Any other public comments? All right, thank you, we'll move on. Deputy Mayor Pendleton, you want to set up the executive session?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seventeen B, exec, to go into executive session to discuss matters concerning security strategy and deployment of security personnel, police department investigation process, I would like to invite our Town Manager, Mr. Maniscalco, and also our Chief of Police, Chief Winstrom. And seventeen C will be to discuss matters that would result in disclosure of exempt public records relating to contract negotiations, and I would like to invite our Fire Marshal, Mr. Walt Summers.
All right.
Hold on, Mr. Maniscalco.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of going to this executive session for seventeen B and C, say aye. Aye, and you oppose, nay. Thank you. Mr. Maniscalco, how do we manage executive session now?
So unfortunately, due to the hybrid meeting process, it's going to be a little different than we usually would do for executive session. I think if everybody remembers, we would typically go to the other, to the caucus room and hold our executive session and then come back here. Unfortunately, since we're not able to do that, we are going to have to clear the room here. Broadcasting will be stopped, and then it will restart after the executive session is ended, and we can allow the public to come back in at that time.
Thank you all for coming. Five, yes?